Okay, good morning. I'm going to call to order the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners for a special meeting. It is November 18th. It is now 10:00 a.m. We will start with a salute to the flag. Commissioner Herman, would you lead us this morning in a salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, number two, roll call, please.
Vaughn Hartung, Chair.
Here.
Alexis Hill, Vice Chair.
Here.
Bob Lucy on Zoom.
Here.
Kitty Jung on Zoom.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant DA Mary Canderas.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasine, your county clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number three?
Item three is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, anyone online?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will close item number four, Mr. Man-- or item number three. Will take us into item number four, Mr. Manager.
Item four is the declaration of canvas of the vote and order for the 2022 general election per NRS 293.387. Canvas means a review of the election results by the Board of County Commissioners to determine and declare official vote totals and to identify and note errors within the results. The canvas shall note separately any clerical errors discovered and take account of the changes resulting from the errors discovered. And if the canvas is approved and the result declared, direct the clerk and/or registrar of voters as appropriate to enter an abstract of the results in the records for the board, which contains the number of votes cast. For each candidate to certify the abstract, to make a copy of their certified abstract, to make a mechanized report of the abstract in accordance with the rules of the Secretary of State, and to transmit these documents and records to the Secretary of State in the time required under NRS 293.387.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Ms. Canderas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, the District Attorney's Office has reviewed the law about canvassing of election results. So therefore, I offer you the parameters of your legal duties and the scope of today's meeting. The purpose of this meeting is for the board to canvass the voting returns. Canvassing is a process of declaring election results. There are two levels of canvassing, local and statewide. Today, the board will canvass the results and direct them to be transmitted to the Secretary of State, who is the chief elections officer in the state of Nevada. The statute requires that the canvass occur within 10 days of the election, so the canvass must occur today. The board's duties in canvassing are brief and fairly simple. The board reviews the election results, and that means the count. The board notes any clerical errors and if those affected the count. And then, the board declares the official election results. That's it. This is a ministerial and non-discretionary process. There is no legal authority for you not to canvass today. There are statutory mechanisms to challenge the election, and these do not involve the county commission or the canvass. In fact, failure to canvass within 10 days would subject the county to liability in a writ proceeding. And additionally, a canvass is required to avail other statutory remedies, such as recount or contest. What the canvass is not, the canvass is not a brainstorming session to discuss remedies for issues that may have arisen during the election or because the election was not error-free. The canvass is not an opportunity to create an election process different from that allowed by law or to eliminate mail-in ballots or require in-person voting. The canvass is not a time to order a new election and audit. I would also remind the board that the agenda is limited in that it only asks for a canvass. So the board is not going to be taking a variety of alternatives that are not authorized by law. Finally, as far as the meeting process, this board is entitled to run an orderly meeting. Causing a disruption, personal attacks, threatening or harassing language will not be tolerated. If this occurs, the Chair is authorized to call a recess. I reiterate to the board and the public that the purpose of this meeting is narrow in scope and limited to canvassing the voting returns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Canderas. So before we get into this, what we're-- I want to make sure that everybody knows kind of what our time schedule is. At noon, we will take a recess for lunch. Every two hours after that, we'll take about a 20-minute break so that everyone can get up and move around and make sure that you're able to use the restroom and function without missing any portions of the meeting. That said, Mr. Manager, I'm going to turn it back over to you and let you call up your staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, we'll call up the interim registrar of voters, Ms. Jamie Rodriguez.
Welcome, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Manager, Commissioners. Jamie Rodriguez for the record. I do want to start by thanking the staff of the registrar of voters office for their incredibly hard work for this election, as well as the other county and staff from Reno and Sparks who came and helped us process the mail ballots that were received this election. For the 2022 general election, we had a total of 19 early vote centers and 66 Election Day vote centers. None of that would have been possible without the incredible work of our numerous poll workers, ballot runners, supply runners, and technical support who came out and was able to make all of those locations work and operational. This election, we saw what I don't know how to explain as anything other than an explosion of our E's or E-balance. Previously, we'd seen about 40 of those per election, and in this election, we saw about 400. So those E's and E-balance, the popularity of those, the awareness of those for our military and overseas citizens, as well as the state expansion for disabled voters to be able to use that process, has grown substantially. Before we start any election, we complete our pre-LAT or our logic and accuracy testing. This includes a testing of all of our tabulators, which is used to process mail ballots, as well as the programming and testing of all of our ICX primes for the in-person voting. This is all also overseen and signed off on by our certification board. When the election is complete, our certification board comes back and completes our VVPAT audit, also signs off on all of our rejected ballots. This election, we had a total of 67 rejected ballots. Those included things like signed ballots, people who returned envelopes with no ballots, envelopes with two ballots. We also had a handful of ballots that were returned in plain envelopes, and therefore, there was no ability for us to do any sort of signature verification to ensure that it was the voter who had sent that ballot back. They do also, again, test our tabulators to ensure that they worked the same after the election as they did before the election. We had a total of five members of our certification board for this election, and we do greatly appreciate their time to come in and make sure that all of our processes worked for this election. We did have some really important takeaways from the primary that helped us streamline this process to make it much smoother with the much larger turnout that we had this election than we did in the primary. We do have some takeaways, again, from this election of things that we will be continuing to evolve and learn. We definitely have some work we need to do with mail ballots. We are aware of that. We definitely ran into lots of people who went on vacation expecting their mail ballots to be forwarded to them. Federal law prohibits that. We know that we need to work on better being able to track mail ballots as they're being sent out, being able to audit that what we sent to the vendor is also then mailed out to those voters is something that we need to do a better job of, and making sure that it is more readily available to voters once they've opted out of those mail-in ballots, that that opt-out has occurred. We did receive a large number of phone calls from people who did not receive opt-out ballots and let them know that that was because they'd opted out. They'd opted out within that window that it didn't apply for the primaries, so they had expected that the opt-out had not gone through. It did apply for the general. So those and some other things we'll be continuing to work on. What we're obviously looking at today is the results for the 22 general election results. So included in front of you today is the results for the 2022 general election. We also have in front of you is the draft of what we would be sending to the Secretary of State, which includes some of the clerical errors that we did have on the ballot that were posted at the polling locations for this election. For the election as a whole, we had a total turnout of 194,754 votes. We had more mail-in turnout than in-person turnout, about 60% mail turnout to 40% in-person turnout. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Rodriguez. Commissioner Herman, I have you signed in.
I may have heard you wrong, but did you say 400 E-balance?
We had about 400 email ballots that we received this election. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to commend your team and our election workers. This is a whole new landscape with mail-in ballots, and I know that you heard from so many constituents and were, you know, backlogged on, you know, getting back to people, but you did an amazing job. And I feel like, you know, we're learning about how we can best process everyone's vote, 60% in the mail. That shows people want to mail in their ballot. They like that process, and I think it's just figuring out the best way that we can help them track that, and I'm really looking forward to doing that. And so I just commend you, your team, the county manager, and I'm really looking forward to certifying the vote today. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners online, either Ms. Jung or Mr. Lucy.
Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Lucy.
Chairman, thank you. I want to congratulate and thank not only the staff and the-- in the voter-- registrar's office, but all of the volunteers that helped with poll watching and manning our early voting polling. There is a tremendous amount of hours that go into this vote and their ability to do that and conduct a vote. And this is whether you-- however you feel about the situation of the vote, the ability and how Nevada, the state of Nevada, has outlined the way we conduct elections, the county's operation and responsibility is to conduct that election, no matter how the state dictates that that should be held. And it's very difficult sometimes, and it's sometimes very much a moving target. These are issues that come from the legislature that are out of our control many times, but I want to thank staff for being dynamic, nimble, flexible, our volunteers for being resolute and dedicated to the process. I think that this was a challenging election. I think there was a lot of new challenges post-pandemic, but I think that this has been a wonderful outcome, and I think that I look forward to reviewing the canvas and certifying that vote later. So thank you, Chairman, and thank you to all staff.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lucy. Commissioner Jung?
I agree with the vice chairwoman and Commissioner Lucy and want to thank everyone and especially thank everybody who ran this cycle. It is a great right and responsibility that we have, and I'm going to echo what my dear, dear, sweet mom has always taught me. There's no such thing as a loser in a competition. The only one who didn't win was the people who didn't participate. So, well done to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So I'll follow up. Let's back up just a second. Ms. Rodriguez, you mentioned the V-PAT system. Tell us, and I know what the V-PAT system is, but let's put that on the record, please.
Certainly. So the V-PAT system, it's the Voter Verification Audit Paper Trail. So when the state of Nevada went to the automated voting, in-person voting machines, we also have what's called the V-PAT or the paper trail of those votes. So when you go and vote in person, your vote is recorded on that tabulator. It's also recorded on a paper audit trail. So when you are going and you cast your vote, your vote is also printed out on that piece of paper. And so you are verifying your vote on that paper, and it is printed out. At the end of the election, we do an audit of that, and so we choose 20 machines. We then go through, we read the number of votes on that paper trail, on the V-PAT trail, and make sure that it matches what the system actually showed as the number of votes cast on that tabulator. The board then chooses two votes at random from each of those rolls and then ensures that the votes on that paper are the same as what was recorded in the system. So that is to ensure there's always that backup. So if there were something to happen with the USB sticks or some sort of technical malfunction of those machines, we do still have that paper roll that we're able to read those votes and still have those votes cast, so that we can always ensure that every vote is properly cast and that we do have that trail of that. So that is the paper trail of every single vote that is electronically cast, and then the audit is to ensure that the machine is properly recording what that voter is verifying on that paper trail as to what their vote cast was.
Was there any variation?
No. So the certification board did sign off on the audit that we were able to match what was on the V-PAT rolls as to what was in the system.
Okay. I too want to thank the staff. I want to thank all of our volunteers. Couldn't do it without you. Just, we could not do it without you. I just am in awe of how everybody came together, so thank you so very much. And I'm hopeful that we have some suggestions for the legislature to make things smoother in the future. There's just, there's got to be some ways to clean things up. I mean, I have some ideas, I have some thoughts, but I'm looking forward to understanding, especially with your government affairs background, Ms. Rodriguez, to, you know, what we can approach the legislature to say, hey, look, we need to clean these things up. There's got to be a better way to do this. So with that said, Commissioners, anything else? All right. Madam Clerk, let's go into public comment, and I'm going to ask for decorum from everyone. We're going to have people on both sides of the equation, and so please, let's remain respectful. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call public comment.
We do have several people signed in, so I will call two names. The first one will go to the podium. The second one, please queue up. First up, we have Lilith Barron, followed by Tracy Hilton-Thomas.
Good morning. My name is Lilith Barron. I'm with ACLU of Nevada. I'm a Washoe County resident, and I voted in this building for the last decade. However, this year, I voted by mail for the first time. I handed my ballot to my post person, and it was verified 48 hours later, so I'll probably be doing that in the future. It was very easy. I poll watched every day of early voting and at various locations, this one being my favorite because of some of your incredible staff that you have, and on Election Day for the better part of 14 hours, because voters should feel safe when they're making their decisions, and we want to make sure that there are no barriers when you're trying to make your voices heard. And the ACLU of Nevada would just like to extend our deepest gratitude to all of the poll workers, volunteers, the registrar, and anyone else who helped ensure that we had a safe and secure election. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tracy Hilton-Thomas, followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Luke 6:28 teaches us to bless them that curse you and pray for them that despitefully use you. I'd just like to quote, stipulate real quick for the moment, that mail-in ballot is kind of-- numbers kind of deceiving because it does not separate the mail-- the ballots that were actually mailed through the post office versus the ballots that were actually delivered in person. So that might be a more helpful number to have, to really judge who likes to be voting in person. Just because you didn't do it on a machine doesn't mean you don't like voting in person. And I realize at least two of you no longer feel any duty to our office, to your office, or respect for the hard-working people of this community. And I am sure, very relieved, that you are no longer-- that we are no longer your problem. You have cursed us out of the public eye and most assuredly used us for your personal gain and benefit, and many, many, many times, used your vote to spite us. So I have indeed prayed for each of you, that you can see that your conscience will guide your vote today and not your pocketbook or some sense of vindictiveness. I pray that instead, you might actually use this vote towards improving Washoe County's election processes and procedures. I understand the lip service that registrar's permanent staff has been completely replaced with amateur employees. Washoe County's display of inexperience has certainly not gone unnoticed in Australia and countries around the world. Nevada elections are now a laughingstock in the butt of many jokes. I was initially disenfranchised about the registrar barring me from working this year's elections and further dismayed when the registrar suppressed one of the primary parties from working in the central processing room. But now, I see it as God's blessing, because now our hands are clean. Making excuses does not dismiss the poor administration and malfeasance within this election and certainly does not justify the candace of this election results. I am submitting to you my statement of contest afforded by all registered voters in Nevada through the NRS statutes 293.407 and 410, that while Washoe County acknowledges receipt of my ballot, it did not provide proof my ballot was cast or that my vote counted. Carson City residents receive receipts and submit their ballots into the tabulators themselves, so there's no reason that Washoe County and all the other counties can't-- other residents of these counties can't do the same. I strongly request a new election where voters can personally submit their paper ballot into tabulated-- tabulation readers and receipt of the date and time their ballot was counted. Two Chronicles 714 teaches us, only if we will turn from our wicked ways will God heal our land. And I have these integrity violation reports in case anybody doesn't feel that their ballot was counted, and I can leave them there for anybody who wishes to file it with the Secretary of State. Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie Fianaca, followed by Kristiana Brown.
Valerie Fianaca for the record, and thank you all for your service. I know this week has been really trying for you all. It's about to get more trying. I stand before you to contest this certification. I know that there's no legal premise for it probably, but I want to make my opinion known. I worked all week phoning voters, post-election, and an election integrity effort. Just yesterday, in one day, 11 people were gasped to find that their ballot had been cast in their name because they had not voted. That's one day. I heard this all week long. I instructed them to contact the Secretary of State and the registrar of voters and come here today. Most of them have to work. Hopefully, some will find it important enough to speak out. This is the ultimate disenfranchising of voters, and it is fraud. Democrats, as well as Republicans, should find it appalling. The trend I noted throughout the week was that these were registered, nonpartisan voters for the most part. One gentleman told me he E-voted. When asked if he was military or out of the country, he said, no, just out of town. So, the ROV and the SOS still cannot tell me if my vote was counted. I wrote to the Secretary of State, and she says, they can't tell me that until after the certification of the vote. I find that extremely troubling. Not that I even care, because I don't really-- we won the two top offices, I'm not really concerned about it. I mean, unless, of course, there's something more nefarious there, too. The multiple voters who-- I volunteer in the GOP office, I'm going to tell you that straight up. The multiple voters who were-- that showed up in our office with two to four ballots in their hands who were mad, can you explain this to me? I can't explain it to them. I wish somebody could. I sent them to you guys. I hope you guys could explain it to them. In other words, we, the people, have no faith in our elections, and this election must not be certified. It would be great if we could get a redo. I'm not counting on that, because we've already been told we can't, but you all should at least pay attention to some of these people who've been disenfranchised. And thank you, Jeanne, for returning my phone call. My own commissioner didn't have time, apparently.
Kristiana Brown, followed by Mary Richardson.
I'm Kristiana Brown for the record, and first, I want to give my thanks to our amazing election workers and American citizens who went door-to-door and stood in the breach of disinformation and proved again that our election system in Nevada is free and fair. And let's hope that this long and offensive nightmare is nearly over. 2022 was a crushing repudiation of those who would seek to undermine free and fair elections and a lesson to the anti-learning, conspiracy theory-minded election deniers who ingest misinformation without research and believe that you can make up your own facts and ignore or deny any unwelcome realities. Denying results does not change them. The people rejected lies, disinformation, intimidation, and ignorance, as well as hatred. The voters spoke, the system worked, and the rule of law held. And to their credit, the majority of Republican candidates, who were the liotest promoters of the big lie, have suddenly seen the light, have suddenly become adults again and accepted the will of the voters. Let's hope the others learn from their standing up for democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Richardson, followed by Jennifer Willet.
Please.
Good morning. I'm Mary Richardson. I am with Indivisible, Northern Nevada, and I have voted in this election. I was not able to work in this election because of a health issue, but I did watch online, and it was wonderful to see the professionalism, the purposefulness, and all of the security measures. As someone who had worked inside, I knew what I was watching. And for people who doubt the election, I just really suggest that they get educated, read the website. And I'd like to thank Commissioners Hill and Lucy and Jung and Hartung for thanking and honoring the people who did the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jennifer Willet, followed by Amber Fogout.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Willet, and I'm the Nevada Grassroots Manager, All Voting is Local, a nonpartisan organization that exists to expose and dismantle threats to voter freedom to build a democracy for us all. I'm here to support the canvas of the 2022 midterm election. Nevadans believe the freedom to vote must belong to us all, a belief that our laws reflect. I'd like to start by sincerely thanking interim registrar of voters, Jamie Rodriguez, and all election workers for their hard work to implement these state laws, ensure all eligible voters could vote, and ensure all votes are counted. I live here in Washoe County, and I also volunteered as an election protection poll monitor and vote count observer throughout the election. So I voted in this election, and I also had a front row seat to see how well this election was run. I saw election workers continually work through complicated situations to ensure voters could exercise their rights. For example, the last voter I saw on Election Day was a first-time voter who needed to register the same day, and I watched as the election workers carefully guided her through the process, and we all cheered as she cast her ballot with her kids watching. It was a great end to a well-run election. In this election, over 194,000 Washoe County residents voted, 53% of which voted by mail. An accurate count of almost 200,000 ballots, over half of which are mail ballots that need to be processed, takes time, and this is our new normal. It means the system is working and all ballots cast are being counted. I also observed this process, which was smooth and secure. Due to the dedication of the registrar of voters and election workers, democracy prevailed in 2022, where everyone's right to vote was protected. I urge you to-- I urge you to certify this election and I again thank all election workers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Amber Falgo followed by Kimberly Essie.
Welcome.
Hello Commissioners, thank you so much. My name is Amber Falgo and I am the Northern Nevada Manager with Institute for a Progressive Nevada and I am also speaking on behalf of Silver State Voices. Thank you for your time today. Voting is a sacred right in our country. We are incredibly lucky to have dedicated election workers who consistently work to ensure our elections are safe, secure, and modern. Voters have multiple options for casting their ballots, which is fantastic. In fact, my mother, who is in her 60s, voted by mail in 2020 and then she found it so convenient that she also voted by mail in 2022. It was a really awesome option for her. In addition to that, voters can vote in person and that is a great option. My father finds that more easy and, and better for him. So I think it's fantastic that we have so many options and I am proud to say that I am confident in the 2020 election as I was, or in the 2022 election as I was in the 2020 election. This time around, I was actually able to observe vote counting and signature verification at the Washto County Registrar's office and I found that process illuminating and fascinating and super educational. I think everybody should take the opportunity to go observe. I saw no irregularities or issues and it was, it was truly a wonderful process to watch. I want to thank Washto County, interim Washto County Registrar Jamie Rodriguez. Her and her team have done an incredible job this election cycle, making sure that our elections ran smoothly and that we are here today. So in closing, I want to say that we must continue to support every person that is a part of this process, including the Commissioners who will do their jobs today, the registrar who will continue to do her job, and all of our election workers who work diligently every election year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kimberly Essie followed by Amy Willoughby.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Kimberly Essie and I am a graduate student of social work at University of Nevada Reno. I am here to support the canvas of the 2022 midterm election. The state of Nevada has increased voter participation by making voting more accessible through increased voting options and by expanding access to voter registration. As a longtime Washto County resident and first-time volunteer for election protection poll monitoring and vote count observing on election day, I recognize the hard work of election workers in ensuring the implementation of state laws that made increased voter participation possible. My experience as an election protection poll monitor was that election workers worked tirelessly throughout the election day during a snowstorm to ensure all who were in line at 7:00 PM were able to cast their vote. Some people were first-time voters registering same day and were able to cast their votes with the help of diligent and knowledgeable election workers who were patient throughout the whole process for every voter during what was likely a very long day for them. As someone who normally votes via mail-in ballot, I was impressed with the organization of the polling place I volunteered at and how efficiently the polling place was run to ensure every vote was counted. The election was a great example of democracy in action and for me, someone new to the process of elections and observing as both a student and a volunteer, I feel very privileged to have witnessed this very well-run election in Washto County. I have a profound amount of respect for the registrar, voters, staff, and election workers and feel proud of our county where over 192,000 Washto County residents voted. Voting is one of the most important rights in our country and to ensure our voices are heard, I urge you to certify this election. Thank you for your time, County Commissioners, interim registrar of voters Jamie Rodriguez, and all election workers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Amy Willoughby followed by Kimberly Carden.
Good morning. My name is Amy Willoughby and I was an election worker. I originally started in 2020 because I realized people wanted to vote in person and it was really important to them and I knew that they would need election workers, so that's when I got into it. I thought it would, in the past, it would be very long and I wasn't sure that I had the time to do it, but once I did it, I realized it was very rewarding work. And I wanted to thank the district attorney for explaining this stuff at the beginning about the canvassing of the vote because I am relatively new to all of this. I've never been to a county commission meeting and I heard about this one and wanted to come and explain, just share a bit of my experience as an election worker. You know, we go in there, we are very dedicated to helping people who want to vote, vote. And that's what I've found both in 2020 and in this last election, 2022. People come in, there are all sorts of interesting problems, people have questions about their maps, why isn't this candidate here? There are a lot of things that you can help people with, really just kind of assure them that this is what's happened, you know, that their vote counts, that their voice matters, and that we want everyone who can possibly, is possible and legally able to vote in the state of Nevada and in Washto County to vote. And sometimes people get turned away because they don't actually live in Washto County. But when you're in the trenches, you realize you just want everyone who walks in the door, no matter what their political party is, to have their voice. And so I wanted to thank the registrar of voters because they provided a lot of help along the way. And I think it's just been a very interesting process and been very rewarding to have been involved in this. And I do realize there's a lot of contentious feelings about it, but I have prayed and I have prayed for the outcome of our election and for the people too, just so that, you know? And I really feel confident in the elections and what's, you know, what took place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Carden followed by Julie Morrison.
Welcome.
Hello, that'd be me. I am a 26-year Army retiree and I'm bringing that up for two different reasons. One reason is during that 26-year period, I lived all over the United States and I also was stationed in four different countries outside of the United States, obviously. And during that time, I was a mail-in ballot and I was always completely confident that my vote counted. I would touch base with my registrar before election season to make sure that I was getting my mail-in ballot. And then I also touched base with my registrar afterwards to make sure that my ballot counted. So I've always been very, very confident with the mail-in ballots. Now, the second reason I bring up the fact that I'm an Army retiree is that during that timeframe, I was also always volunteered to be the voting officer. So that when, if I was stationed in Panama, I would get my soldiers together, line them up and say, okay, let's register to vote. It was very, very important to me. And so this year, I volunteered with Silver State Voices to be a poll watcher. And I did that on five different days, four different locations, and I found it to be very, very rewarding work. I will tell you that as I watched the election workers being polite, being patient with the voters that came in, I was impressed with the voters. They stood in line on election day. At once, one of the places I was at, they were in line for about an hour and a half. Nobody was disruptive, everybody, not everybody was joking, but everybody was just being patient with the process. And so when I looked out at the voters and I looked at the, the, the election workers, I'm going to tell you what, I saw democracy in action and I felt so very, very proud. I didn't vote in person until I was 46 years old and I hadn't been in a, a poll. And when I sat there as a poll watcher, watching everything that was going on, I was just extraordinarily proud of our election workers and our voters. And so with that, I'm just going to say hoo-ya, I appreciate everything that you guys did.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your service.
Julie Morrison followed by James Bentham.
Good morning. I'm a full-time resident of Nevada for 32 years, a small business owner for 28 years, and a tax professional. In 2022, I was a poll observer and then an election observer in the count room for both the primary election and this general election. In the general, I poll observed five days in early voting plus multiple sites on election day. I then election observed for 12 days in the registrar of voters count room. Jamie Rodriguez, interim registrar of voters, ran a clean and efficient operation and procedure as required by Nevada statute was followed. Thank you and please certify this election. Thank you to staff.
Thank you, ma'am.
James Bentham followed by Renee Rosentus.
Okay, I'll distribute these. I'll distribute these and then start his time.
Good morning. For the record, my name is James M. Bentham. I'm requesting that my speech be put in the record along with the documents I have submitted for everyone here. I have 10 copies. I want to thank everyone that worked in the election. I know it was a lot of hard work and the voters appreciate it. There are five voters in my household, only two received sample ballots and only two received the official election ballot. Since five ballots were mailed out and we only received two, that is a 40% success rate. The chain of custody for these ballots somehow failed for my household. And the ballot signature verification is a very important part of the election. Ballots are legal documents. What does it take to verify a signature beyond reasonable doubt? My driver's license, excuse me, has a signature. If the signature proved my identity, there would be no need for a picture. Passports also have pictures. Usually, signatures are verified on legal documents by a notary, two or three witnesses, or a photo ID, or sometimes a thumbprint. I bring this up because signature verification is very important. In a criminal case, what does it take to verify signatures? Expert testimony. I passed out a police criminal complaint and in there, they talk about verifying signatures through expert testimony. Did we receive this type of verification in our election? If we not, if we didn't, then the election is questionable. If people bring up questioning their ballots or whether they voted or not, then this question should be brought up and then the election not certified based on this information. Also, I have an article showing this criminal complaint being brought up in Pennsylvania. It's important to realize that not all signatures are correct and true. Thank you.
Renee Rosentus followed by Robert Blackstock.
Good morning Commissioners, thank you.
Welcome.
I would just like to start by, there's so many issues that you have no idea. First of all, the mail-in ballots, my understanding is that there were mistakes made on many of those ballots and so they sent out another set. And then they sent out another set. So we actually had three sets of ballots go out to the public. That was not addressed by Jamie. And I observed a man that came in and he took his ballots to the counter and he told the lady that he voted on October 26th and he got two more ballots. And he said, and one of them is postmarked from Seattle. And he encouraged the woman he was talking to to, to report that. And I was able to talk to him when he left and he was not interested in what could be done because he was of an opposite party. And I explained to him that we have Democrat observers and nonpartisan observers. I happen to be the only one there and heard the conversation. And I explained to him that he can contact the Secretary of State, don't leave it up to anyone else. So I think the public needs to be informed about what they can do, about when, when they have complaints and irregularities. And what happened to all those extra ballots? What happened to all of them? I can tell you, the last day that I observed, I saw someone from the office bring in a stack of envelopes into the processing room. And I went out and, and talked with one of the, I talked with Heather and Chris, the guy who brought in the ballots. And he said, oh, I just picked up the mail. Well, it was past the deadline and those ballots went into the processing room. So what happened to those ballots after those that were not supposed to be counted? What happened to those when it went into the processing room? It should have never gone there. There should have been a separate place right in the office where those had to be dropped and not commingled with the other ballots. There's just so many things that happened. There was like a big party one night when I was there. I saw the blue bags come in, the way they set it up, it was all around these tables. You couldn't see what they were doing. They were, they were all just having a great time partying. One, one election worker, a ballot runner, opened the door, kept it open, let in a man with three dogs. A lady was carrying a big bag over her shoulder, her purse. It was just ridiculous. It was ridiculous.
Thank you, ma'am.
Robert Blackstock followed by Bruce Schmidt.
Welcome.
Yes, good morning. My name is Bob Blackstock. I, I don't have any prepared remarks for this, so I'm going to sort of just speak extemporaneously here, but just a bit of background on me. I'm, I was born in Oklahoma and spent some time, I lived in Texas, then Washington DC and here in Reno for the last three years. My background in politics started when I was 16 and I worked my dad's congressional campaign. I went on to work on the US House of Representatives floor and have, went from there to college and also graduate school. Worked in downtown Los Angeles as a business consultant there for one of the biggest consulting firms in the world, doing things such as warehouse consulting, business procedures consulting. And personally, I have two patents on inorganic streaming by refringence. I also worked in Santa Barbara for a venture capital firm there. Our company logo was an X-ray diffraction pattern of a quasicrystal having five-fold symmetry. The reason I'm explaining this is that I'm very familiar with business, business processes, politics. And to bring this back to Reno, I was a poll observer, a poll worker, and a count observer. The poll observing I did was at four different locations here in the Reno area. And the poll working I did, I was an intake specialist and it's the first time I ever did that. And this team over here, I went through the training process with them. They did a fantastic job with that. The poll center that I worked at was in West Reno, close to where I live. And the operation there was fantastic. I didn't see any problems there. The manager of the poll worker of the poll center, he and I took those election materials here to this location that night. So that morning for me, started at 5:30 and didn't finish till 10 o'clock. I then was a poll account observer, watching these people work very efficiently, very professionally in that counting center. I have every confidence from my engineering background, my business background. I have every confidence from my engineering background, my business background, and politics background, that this team did a fantastic job on the count, and I think that we have a good certifiable count here and voting canvas for this vote. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, sir.
Bruce Schmidt, followed by Sarah Mahler.
Good morning, and thanks for this opportunity. Just, my name is Bruce Schmidt, I live in Sparks. And based on all of the concerns that have been raised since the prior election, I was a little concerned about people complaining about possible problems with voting, so I signed up this year to be a poll observer. And I went to four or five different locations during the early voting and also on Election Day. And based on what I observed, I'd like to come here and publicly thank all of the poll workers, all of the people who are responsible for putting on the election, because I must say, I was quite impressed. Everybody worked very diligently, they were obviously well-trained because they were prepared, everything ran smoothly, even when various glitches occurred, and things do happen, you know? There were some machines that had to have technical fixes. Most voters came in, were prepared, and did their job, but occasionally, a signature wouldn't match with the official signature, and the poll workers worked carefully, and in those cases, asked for ID, in some cases, had to fill out a same-day registration. It took time, they very patiently did that. Everything I saw caused me to believe everyone had a fair opportunity to vote, they did vote. I stayed after hours after voters left and observed the removal of the written record and the USB drives, and how they were submitted in a secure way with chain of custody. So I simply want to say, I felt very comfortable with what I observed, and I really would like to thank all of those who were responsible for doing the hard work of pulling off what I thought was a very excellent election. And I have to say that I left with a very, kind of a warm feeling. The process is impressive, and I'd also like to suggest, I've heard a couple of people today say that they observed some problems. The fact that there may have been problems doesn't surprise me, but I'm confident that the people involved in the process will follow up on some of those individual allegations, talk to the people who were involved, and actually find out what happened and take the appropriate action. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Sarah Mahler, followed by Lori Owen.
Welcome.
Hi, Sarah Mahler here, twenty-six-year resident of Spanish Springs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. Thank you to the commission. Our democracy is alive and well in Washoe County. Thank you for everyone else who took the time to come here and speak on whatever position you have here. And I am really grateful for the team of poll workers, poll observers, and poll counters. Again, in Washoe County, democracy is alive and well. I personally, on Election Day, was at Sun Valley Community Center on that snowy day, watching our friendly, dedicated team of poll workers and observers pull off the process without a hitch. And I do know that there was a few comments that we could have had more intake specialists, and I do agree with that. But overall, our process was smooth, and that was, thank, that process was because we obviously hired the right people, and they worked through glitches. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lori Owen, followed by Carolyn Sullivan.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Lori Owen, and I volunteered to be an intake specialist this year for the first time. This is the first time I've been involved in voting, and mainly because I wanted to know what was going on, how it works. And it was great, the class that they give. Everybody's questions were answered, and there were a lot of questions of all sorts. And I worked at Shaw on Election Day, and it was steady, and we were short one intake person. I will say, you know, when you're checking signatures, I thought it was going to be really hard, but most people do not change their signature that much. And the ones that did, I had no problem when I asked them for an ID, they were more than willing to give it. And I assume that DMV keeps, upkeeps the new signature, because every one of the IDs matched the signature that they were giving. So I just want to say that I thank the registrar's office, everybody that worked, we're in good humor, the poll watchers were great, and mostly the voters were great. They were glad to be voting and having their vote taken in. So, thanks to everybody, and I hope you certify today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carolyn Sullivan, followed by Julia Adams.
Welcome.
Hi there. My name's Carolyn Sullivan, and I've lived in Spanish Springs for decades. I am one, I'm representing thousands of people that aren't here today that feel the same way I do, because they're working, or they're taking care of kids, or something like that. So I just want you to know that. It's all, it's all over social media, the things that I'm going to say here today. I'm not paid to be here. I volunteered everything I did this year. And I dropped my ballot off at the registrar of voters on Election Day, so I was one of those people that didn't want to go through the USPS or didn't want to vote on a machine. When I checked on the Secretary of State's website, my ballot is labeled, you know, you can enter your name and your birth date, and it tells you the disposition of your vote. My ballot is labeled "received." It is not labeled "counted." They say that they won't label my ballot "counted" until after the certification. That's just wrong. I don't know whether that is just words that they're using. If it is, they're wrong. Or if it's really true that they haven't counted my ballot, it's hanging out there somewhere. So, just so that you know that. The USP, so I volunteered down at the ROV. I spent eight hours, volunteer hours, a lot of people here today are being paid for their comments. I'm not being paid. I spent lots of hours, eight of them, down at the ROV, watching in the fishbowl, which what we called it. If you haven't seen the way they've set it up, the fishbowl is on the far end of the room, closest to the external hallway. It's plexiglass, I think, there's no audible, or if there is audible, it's muffled. Sometimes I was one of three or four observers in there. Every time there were observers on the other side of the aisle, they chatted the entire time about music, about bands, about anything you can imagine. There was no meaningful observation on their part. I, on the other hand, was paying attention. What I saw at the signature verification table was terrible. Initially, it was fine. The people that do it only have just a PowerPoint that they go through initially. And then I saw, you know, there's a screen of four signatures, and I saw five and six ballots being turned over on that screen. And then I saw packets of ballots being turned over on that screen. So I was worried about that. There's no meaningful observation when they duplicate the ballots, because they're either far away from us, from where I was, or they are, they have their backs to me, I can't see what party they belong to. And so the duplication of the ballots that had to be cured was problematic for me. I just want to say that this election was not right, and in a court of law, if you hear some problems, if there's a seed of doubt, then they have to go back. They do not get to.
Welcome, ma'am. Thank you.
They do not get to call that person guilty or not.
Thank you.
Julia Adams, followed by Adrian Lowry.
Good morning. My name's Julie Adams.
Welcome.
I did work the early voting as an intake specialist. The sample ballots did have some names that did not match the ballot, so we had a lot of people asking about that, that mistake. I would say about thirty percent of the people that came in would tell me and the crew I was working with that they had not received their mail-in ballot. A postal worker happened to be there one day, and he said that there was still a pallet of ballots at the main post office that they had not scanned in yet. So I would assume that they were never delivered. I never did receive mine. Sometimes I would scan a ballot, and it would not change the count on my laptop, or would count as two instead of one. I was assured that we would hand count at the end of the day. Sometimes the card readers weren't working, you would have to reset everything. So I'm just not sure how we can be sure that all of the ballots being mailed back are being handled properly as well, if the ones that were being mailed out were mishandled. So, you guys take an oath to work on this commission, so I'm just going to read a couple of definitions from my 1989 edition of the Webster's Dictionary. I'm sure that these definitions have changed somewhat by now in 2022. So, oath, invoking of God or some sacred or reverend person or thing as witness of the truth of a statement or binding nature of a promise, to take an oath to make a solemn undertaking constituted by an oath. Integrity, moral soundness, wholeness, state of being whole and undivided, uncorrupted, quality of being honest, having strong moral principles, uprightness. Integrity is lacking in our culture these days. Washoe County is in the news. You have the power to put us in the national news for a good reason, with a decision made honoring your oath because you have integrity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Adrian Lowry, followed by Lisa DeHart.
Welcome. Hello. My name is Adrian Lowry. I've lived here for about eight years, and before that, I lived in Virginia. I've always been very impressed with the elections here in Nevada, especially the opportunity to go to early voting. Usually, when you, you know, go to early voting, there's not much of a line, if any line at all, and that's really pleasant. I've also started doing the mail-in voting for this election. I filled out the mail-in vote and dropped it off at the Sparks Library, and that was a very good experience. It verified that I had not voted before, you know, earlier, that the vote that I was submitting was the first vote that I'd submitted. And I attended events with first-time voters, they all had good experiences, and I talked to a lot of just people that I know about their experiences, and they also did not have any issues. So I just want to say, great job, this is, you know, has been a very successful election, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lisa DeHart, followed by Oscar Williams.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Lisa DeHart, and I've lived in Nevada since 1990. I moved here from Michigan, and I love it here. I just want to say thank you so much to all of you for your time and for the hard work that you do, and to all of you employees as well. I know it's hard to be a public servant, and I appreciate how it is to have to deal with different personalities and, of course, rules that the government has. You know, we have to, strict things we have to do are the bean counters, so I understand that as well. The reason I'm here is, if you could still ask questions as part of your review, if you could ask how the drop boxes for mail-in ballots were processed on Election Day as part of your canvass, because that's what I did. I did vote my mail-in ballot, and then I took it in person to the Sparks Christian Fellowship. And I go on the line to the Secretary of State, you know, a couple days later, and it showed it was received. And I went to the ballot tracks also, and it said it was received, but they both say that wasn't processed. So then this Tuesday, on the fifteenth, I look again in the Secretary of State, and instead of saying ballot received, it said ballot mailed to me. So for some reason, during those few days, they changed the verbiage, and I, so I don't know if my ballot was received or not. I did call here to the county, and the employee was so nice, and I could tell he was nervous, but he looked and he said, "It's been received, but it hasn't been processed." So today, I thought I'll go down and ask him in person, so I could give you guys the most updated information, and maybe I don't even need to speak, but they said they, I couldn't go ask until after this meeting. So I just think if we could clarify that, I don't know if you still can ask questions, but maybe the public would appreciate knowing that. And I just feel that the big thing that we need is, we need to reinstate the trust in our state for the ballots, and like Mr. Harding said, I appreciate the commissioner saying that we need to maybe work with the assembly to try to find out what we could do differently. I know before the COVID and the executive emergency orders, we used to have the absentee ballots for people that are disabled, that aren't going to be here, and it seemed like we had a successful voting back then, so I wish you would consider doing that. I feel like mailing them to every random address is like publishers, clearinghouse, sweepstake, but things, I mean, they're just all over the place, and I don't even know how we could count them, and if you figure only fifty-five percent of us even voted now, just think if we would have had eighty percent, holy cow, it would have been way more. But anyways, I just appreciate your time and would appreciate any consideration in supporting hand recount like Knight County did. Just, it can't hurt to do it, and then maybe it will help us heal, you know? That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oscar Williams, followed by Bruce Foster.
Welcome.
Oscar Williams, for the record. I'm not being paid for my comments. By the way, the Ms. Candares, thank you for your explanation of what a canvass is. You kind of missed glossed over the one point that maybe the most important part of it is, it is to define the true vote cast. And if there's questions of the truestness of the vote, then maybe it shouldn't be certified. I've ordered my mail ballot to have paper, because I don't trust the virtual ballot. I submitted my mail ballot to the ROV on Election Day. I don't have confirmation my ballot has been accepted. I have no understanding if my votes were accurately recorded. As a result, I have no confidence in the results. My trust in the registrar of voters is diminished. I was disturbed when Kimberly Carlson spoke a little while ago about hour-and-a-half lines at the polls. Wow, that's a long line. Maybe we could have more polling locations? And lastly, mail ballots were never approved of by voters. It's unconstitutional on its face because of that. And ballot waste is systemic. Millions of dollars are being wasted by mail ballots that are discarded, not counted, just waste. Save the trees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bruce Foster, followed by Timothy Burke.
Welcome.
Yes, hello, ladies and gentlemen. Bruce Foster, resident of Sparks and a grandfather of eight. And I truly believe that we're at a crossroads here in our post-Christian, you know, culture. And I truly don't believe that we can trust these elections any longer. As we have seen in the last legislative session, that what was at once illegal is now totally legal. And I did raise my hand the last election. You know, this is my first, pretty much, rodeo, and regarding being a precinct captain, wanting to be involved in the process, and also being a poll watcher. And I have to admit, the poll watching and the people that were running it at the Spanish Springs Library, very, very efficient. But then I go to other facilities, like Kate Smith, and it was total chaos. They had issues with the machines, and it was a small quartered area. And other areas, like the day of voting, that was also a real challenge because of the fact that they just didn't have enough poll workers to be able to satisfy the volume, which I know Spanish Springs Library had the highest volume of all voters. So my question is, is that what direction are we going to go to? Are we going to maintain as a constitutional republic? Or are we going to be... Or are we going to be a country that is going to be run by the people centralized government? And I know that back and so therefore I have to say that we cannot certify this election. And two, I want to bring up that since this was a very contentious election, my question is, is that did the county commission, all you that are on the commission, did you actually take time out to actually take a look at what was going on in the, as they say, the ROV? Have you taken a daily walkthrough? Did you observe for yourself specifically what was going on? And I, I just wish to leave you with this is that we all know that Joseph Stalin did say it's not who, you know, how many are voting is actually who counts about. Thank you.
Timothy Burke followed by Gordon Gossage.
Welcome, sir.
Hi, Tim Burke, Sparks. And I'm one of the people that was told that when I went to vote in person, which is what I had opted in for, that I'd been sent a ballot. Well, said ballot has never arrived. My wife is in the same position. So to me, you know, how can you certify an election when you can't even tell where the ballots are? You know, in my case, I'm wondering is my, which ballot was counted? Did somebody else put in a signature on my mail-in ballot and get that counted? Or was my in-person ballot counted? I have no way of knowing and that's, something like that should not be happening. And there's been a lot of people touting the wonderful mail-in ballot system. Well, how wonderful it is if people are getting extra ballots? Other people are not getting ballots? And then how are they being counted? I don't think I heard, maybe I just missed it, what the adjudication rate was either. And I know in some places around the country, adjudication rates have been pretty darn high. And that shouldn't be anything happening either. The only way you can do a real fair election is have people come in, show ID and vote. And there are cases in which people should be allowed to vote by a mail-in ballot, but that should not be the standard. And I just don't think this should be certified without a lot more investigation into what has actually happened here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gordon Gossage followed by Janet Butcher.
Good morning, it's Gordon Gossage and I'm actually here on behalf of my uncle. My uncle was born in 1918 in the Bronx, Italian neighborhood in Arthur Avenue. And he was christened Giuseppe Velella. And he later, because of the times, changed his name to Joseph to fit into America. My Uncle Joe was killed on the island of Bougainville in New Guinea, 1944, defending the right to vote for everyone in this room. My Uncle Joe was killed. He was killed by a misguided soldier for the Imperial Japan government, an authoritarian populist government, a racist government. And he was wrong and my Uncle Joe was right. When I stand here and spend three minutes saying whatever opinion, whatever political opinion I want, it's my Uncle Joe who makes sure that I'm not arrested for saying something like people in Russia and formerly Ukraine. I also, when I vote, my Uncle Joe is with me. When I registered my company, Vergenesis Reno, Inc., here in this building, my Uncle Joe stood by me. And I knew, as did he, that the government wouldn't interfere with my rights. People who are attacking our free and fair election system are attacking the American way of life. Thankfully, the election denial movement is dead. I urge you, whether you're Republican, nonpartisan, or Democrat, or a third party, including American independent, let's unify now over a real issue. That real issue is affordable and workforce housing. We can work together on that. It doesn't matter who we vote for. There is an unjust system that I've benefited from. As a boomer, I made a lot of money in real estate. As a guy in the tech industry, I made a lot of money. But right now there are people who make 80,000 a year who can't afford their own housing. I urge unity, all parties. And remember, my Uncle Joe is right here. He's defending all of us. Thank you very much.
Janet Butcher followed by Scott Finley.
Welcome, ma'am.
Good morning, Janet Butcher for the records. I'd like to start out with a civic lesson. I know that people are trying to rebrand our government as a democracy. We are a constitutional republic and it is important to know the difference. I'd like to say that Uncle Joe must not know that I was threatened to be arrested for poll watching last election by our own AG. I appreciate being able to be an election worker this year. Especially Janice, Shannon and Jasmine were very, very helpful. But I do have some observations that I made and it's not, nobody is questioning the hard work of everybody in the ROV or the election workers, believe me. I took my day off of work where I could have been making 10 times an hour what I was paid. But there, there were issues, understaffed. This would never, ever have passed an IT process audit. Everyone used the same password. I've been through many, many IT audits. And it just wouldn't have taken place. I, this is mine. I pulled it off last night. It says it was received and we've heard this already. The Secretary of State site says that I received a mail-in ballot on the 8th. And verification of signatures, how can anyone actually verify signatures? And believe me, there were a lot of signatures like this. I do have to say 80% of the people that did come in did offer their ID, which helped. So to me, that's a good reason for voter ID. Nobody is questioning, questioning the, I kind of have notes all over the place because as I listen to everybody, I go, I cannot believe some of these. There's a lot of procedure changes that need to be taken a look at. And I, I am writing it up just like I got IT audits. So I'll present that later to the commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am.
Scott Finley followed by Chris Sanseverino.
And if I could get the overhead projector.
It's on. Please start the clock.
Please enter, please enter my public comment and these documents into the records per NRS 241. I do not condone violence. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County. I have a military background of over five years in the financial management and comptroller career field. I am delighted to inform you that for this election, my mail-in ballot was not erroneously flagged as in route to the registrar of voters before I even had a chance to send my mail-in ballot through the mail like in 2020. Unfortunately, the ballot tracks website was automatically made inaccessible to all Nevadans until November 8th, election day. Why was ballot tracks made inaccessible for tracking purposes by voters? Despite the discovery that neither ballot tracks or its parent company, I3 Logix, had a contract with Washoe County or the Secretary of State and this entity was not registered to operate in the state of Nevada until July of 2021, why does the registrar of voters and Secretary of State trust this company when its actions or lack thereof have already proven that it cannot be trusted? It was reported that on November 9th, the cameras at the registrar of voters were turned off. There was, there were no reported power outages in the area at that time. So it must be presumed that the cameras were deliberately turned off. This means the burden of proof is on you. What proof do you have that mail-in ballots were not removed from the registrar of voters' office? What proof do you have that no duplicate mail-in ballots were brought into the registrar of voters' office? What proof do you have that no duplicate mail-in ballots were on standby in the janitor's closet? When I went to vote in person on election day, an election worker had me sign an affidavit to verify that I would not send in my mail-in ballot afterwards, as doing so would be double voting. I informed the election worker that the registrar of voters told me that if an individual votes in person, their in-person vote will automatically override any mail-in ballot that arrives at the election office. For this reason, we agreed that the affidavit requirement is redundant. Why aren't election workers being properly trained and informed about basic fraud prevention mechanisms like this? Or is this only applicable to counted votes and not received votes? The only use I can see in requiring such an affidavit requirement is that the affidavit can be used to cross-reference and indirectly know who has not voted in person and still has a vulnerable mail-in ballot en route to the registrar of voters. Lastly, as ballot tracks specifically handles mail-in ballot tracking, why is it that there is a new step titled provisional ballot when voters log in to see their current mail-in ballot? For these reasons, I requested the Board of Commissioners to make an official declaration condemning mail-in voting and vote no in civil disobedience until these glaring issues have been fully addressed and resolved. Thank you.
Chris Sanseverino followed by Amber Hart.
Good morning. My name is Chris Sanseverino and I would like my comments to be part of the record. I'd like to, I'd like to give you some people's opinion, not just mine, others who didn't work for the registrar's office. I'd like to give you something a little more independent. Let's start off with email ballots. Okay, speaking with a couple of people, we kind of figured email ballots are really laughable and for two reasons. They're laughable because they don't seem to be very verifiable and they don't seem to be accurate. You know, people are talking about voter ID in person. Well, let's, let's think about email ballots. Do they really, really make sense? Okay, another thing that myself and other people are concerned about is the big delay in results after the vote. Okay, that's kind of unnecessary. I know there's laws and everything like that, but many, many other states have their results less than 12 to 24 hours after the vote is finished. Why can't we do it that way? Well, why can't we change it? Okay, another thing, the election needs to be, it needs to be above board. Not only does it need to be above board, it needs to appear to be above board. Okay, it needs to be clear to the people, all of, all the voters, that they have to have confidence. Okay, so maybe that's something, something else we can work on. All right, I mean, as far as what I've heard, a lot of us asking, please do a recount of the last election of votes casted. Most, most of everybody I know, they don't really have any faith in it. Okay, next, to public trust. We've got to do something to increase public trust. People in Washoe County, which is most people that I associate with, I don't go down to Vegas very often, they don't trust elections here in Washoe County anymore. Okay, maybe there's something we could do about that. Okay, the way it's done, the way these elections are done, another, another problem. Okay, mail-in voting is a big opportunity for election fraud. Okay, let's, let's change this. Okay, let's change this. Do something to give people confidence. People also don't, they don't approve of the voting machines because we've had a lot of problems and a lot of complaints that these voting machines are not doing the right things. A lot of malfunctions, a lot of other stuff. I think I gave you guys enough to think about and I know you probably not going to happen, but we'd like to ask you, please do a recount of the last election. Thank you very much.
Amber Hart followed by Nicholas St. John.
Hi, my name is Amber Hart and I'm here just to officially request that we don't approve the 2022 vote. For 18 years, I voted a straight Democrat. And I was one of those that was quite sad when Hillary Clinton didn't make it in. I cried even. But in that time, I noticed that Hillary Clinton was able to say that she thought that there was voter fraud and yet people applauded her for that. It was allowed. Yet now we can't question it. We can't question the integrity of how our vote is counted. By then, 2020, I have to thank Governor Sisolak for turning me finally into a Republican. Turns out I have an inner conservative and I like freedom. There's just so much doubt and that's the problem here is that people have lost their faith. I'm no mathematician, so I'm going to do some quick numbers here just to put out why me as an outsider has questions, questions that I would like to have answers for. Lombardo, so far, per envy.gov, he got 4,497,377 votes. And then Aaron Ford, the rest of the Democrats, Cisco, Cortez Masto. Aaron Ford got 511,000 votes. I'm going to start rounding off here. I'm surprised that the Democrats in this room aren't up here screaming about how that doesn't make much sense to you. How do people show up to vote and then vote Republican for your governor and then change ways down the ticket? How are you guys not mad? How are you guys not questioning things? It's really awkward. It's a weird thing, is it not? So you guys have a million, let's say over a million 23,000 voters voted for these midterms in Nevada. When it came to the governor, there are 4,500, and I'm rounding again, votes missing. When it came to Attorney General, 45,000 votes are missing. When it came to Secretary of State, 1,014,000 votes were cast. To be around 9,000 are missing. When it came to the Senator, 3,000 votes don't add up. Where did those votes go? Did people just decide to skip voting for those? It's possible. Yes, I know it's possible. But those are a lot of numbers to decide to skip that. It just doesn't add up. I, I now pledge that I will get involved so that I have faith again in the system. Thank you.
Nicholas St. John.
Please, please.
Nicholas St. John followed by Cliff Nellis.
Welcome.
For the record, Nicholas St. John. And I'm a longtime resident of Reno, 44 months. Anyway, I've been before you guys a lot. And Chair Hartong, you made a statement earlier that you had some ideas about how we could fix some of the things or improve things here. I'd like to challenge you to not just it be what you think, but what we think. And so there is no mechanism for dialogue with you guys. I've been in here a number of times trying to have a dialogue and you guys won't even answer yes or no question. answer yes or no question. So my challenge is to you, come up with a mechanism so you can actually get the input where we can actually talk back and forth, it's called a dialogue, not a monologue, of how we can work through some of this stuff so that it really makes sense. I'm not going to question whether everything that looks on the surface is valid or not. It more than likely is. However, my Reasonable Doubt Report, which I gave to you, and no one ever returned one of my calls about discussing that document. The questions that we have is what goes on in these machines that could be nefarious? If you look at the question about whether we can trust these machines, according to the law, or, I mean, it's not logic, but if you cannot trust these, why would we vote on something that is not 100% verifiable, that there is nothing going on in changing votes? In the Reasonable Doubt Report, it shows that a lot of things were happening in there and that the votes were being changed. We ran the analysis on it, and we hit a wall when there was 50 zeros because the machine would not calculate beyond that. That means essentially, it was an impossible statistical ability for that race to have happened with counting that way. I was out electioneering on Election Day, and I'm not sure who came out from inside the ROV office, but they wanted me to move. Not their call, I was outside the barrier, and then they started actually shuttling people around me, which is contrary to electioneering, harassing me and saying that I was doing things wrong and that not to listen to me. I'm not sure where that came from. I also had volunteered to be an intake ballot specialist in the '22 primary. I was assigned and then miraculously unassigned and put on call. So if someone was short of intake specialists, here's one that could have been used, and I was not utilized.
Thank you. Cliff Nellis, followed by Donald Fossum. I will distribute a document for Cliff.
Hello, my name is Cliff Nellis. I'm a resident of Washoe County for 47 years, and I observed at ROV and in polling places, and this is my observations. First of all, the NRS, or the NAC here says, "We should have meaningful observation of the process," and there is no meaningful observation. Because the reason, the most important thing there is the verification of the signatures, which is the only thing we can validate the person that voted, and that is not going on, and there's no way to verify. We're stuck in a fishbowl, which they, that's what we call it, a little room with glass around it. We should be able to, these are requests, and we should be able to walk around and look behind the verifiers as long as we behave ourselves, and that can be done. Or you can put cameras up and broadcast it on YouTube so that all the people in Washoe County can see that you are actually verifying the vote, and I don't think it's happening. So that opens a wide-open door to voter fraud, along with the mail-in ballots, you guys. That's why we have no confidence in this system. And we saw the elections flipped for Laxall and for other candidates. So these candidates work hard and spend a lot of money to try to run, and then they get it flipped at the very end, and this is how I think it happened. We had Democrat operatives that mailed their ballots on Tuesday, so it was postmarked the 8th, and by the time it got there on Saturday, and they were not the person voting. So we got all these mail ballots floating all over the state because people have testified here that they got three or four ballots. How do we know that's the person voting? We don't. There's no way to know. The whole thing has so many holes in it. It's incredible, and that's why we need in-person voting at the precinct level. The whole thing is so complicated, because it's all done here, there has to be, 492 precincts have to be separated, and it's a huge operation. If you just go to the precinct in person, show your ID, you eliminate the necessity to check the ID, and then you can just, you can have volunteers, you can have committees working there, and you can have an applicant vote where you can actually believe and trust the system. We do not believe in this system! Do you understand?
Please.
It's full of fraud, and I suggest, Eric, our dear county manager, please put in a Republican, because this is a Democrat operation from top to bottom, and I don't trust it one iota.
Thank you, sir. Please.
Donald Fossum, followed by Lisa Parti.
Thank you. What does that mean? Ballots in the bank in whose favor? I want to thank the Commission for the patience to listen to our grievances today, but this looks a lot more like it would have influence by opinion rather than statistics. And there's been a lot of saying going on here about the difference between, or not enough said about the difference between what was seen by the people who volunteered and what was unseen by all of us. So I'm going to keep it real simple by saying, rather than opinion, what is this most important statistic? How many ballots were distributed? Guess what my question is? How many ballots were counted? And how many, more importantly than that, how many registered voters do we have for comparison in all that? Ballots in the bank. You know, if you go to the bank, we have to have a deposit to even put money in our own account. Why in the hell should we be sending out ballots throughout the state? I heard, so it's hearsay, I'll clarify that, that some ballots were sent out three times, three different statements of ballots, the content. So I'm saying that was, that's hearsay because I can't prove it, but I heard it from reliable sources. Another thing you cannot see here today is that our hardest workers and our most savvy people involved in election integrity are not here today. Guess why? Because they're still out trying to fix it. And they're good people. They're the experts that you used to see in here, not me, or not a number of these other people with all due respect. So if we have to make deposits in the bank using our ID, how dare we allow people to make deposits into our liberties, into our country, without verifying who the hell they are? Thank you.
Lisa Parti, followed by Kim Mack.
Welcome, ma'am.
So if 2020 taught us anything, it taught us that our elections can be manipulated. Georgia pulled out bags of fake ballots after sending the workers and observers home due to a water leak. So having the cameras here go out simultaneously is extremely suspicious, and we have no confidence that there wasn't similar shenanigans during that time. The numbers don't add up considering the number of Democrats that changed party to Republican statewide. And I really hope that you're hearing those who testify as to the problems with people who did not vote, yet there was a vote in their name, the people who firsthand saw problems with the mail-in ballots, as well as no ability to confirm their vote was counted. I implore you, do not certify this election without a formal hand count. Thank you.
Kim Mack, followed by Teresa Keating.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Been here several times, but not for the election. I just request that you don't certify the midterms that just took place. How many anomalies do you have to come across before you think, hmm, maybe an audit is a reasonable approach to what happened? Lots of people have spoken today and brought up different points. Maybe there are people in the audience that haven't ever experienced voter fraud before. I have personally. I never had any question of validness of elections until several years ago. I voted in the 2016 election. I voted in Las Vegas in person when I lived there, and I checked the Secretary of State's website after that. It said I didn't vote in the 2016 election. Okay, that's fraud. Fast forward, my husband and I moved back to northern Nevada in 2019. We vote in the 2020 election in person, but we received six mail-in ballots to our house. That's hugely problematic. Now, we're honest people. We didn't cast votes for anyone else or multiple votes for ourselves, but that's not to say that other people don't. So mail-in ballots, while there's part of an argument saying people with disabilities need them, elderly, that's fine, but can we make the requirements to sign up for that a little more stringent? My mom has a handicap pass for her car. She has to go through medical stuff to get that handicap pass so she can use it. Why can't we do something like that to get mail-in votes to people that need mail-in ballots? Why is that so ridiculous to consider? I think it's a reasonable approach. Voter ID. Lots of people argue that that's racist to require people to show voter ID. Why? Why would that be a racist thing? To ensure that your legal vote as a citizen in this nation be counted properly. These are not ridiculous demands of law-abiding citizens. So if you're going to continue doing things like this, we need to ensure that our votes are counted and that they're verifiable and that they're legal. These are not ridiculous demands by your populace. If we don't do that, we are on the path to becoming Venezuela. We're well on our way there with all the fraudulent voting that's been happening. Please don't certify this election. Call for an audit.
Thank you, ma'am.
Teresa Keating, followed by Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Keating?
Elise Weatherly.
Ms. Weatherly.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. I just wanted to let you know because of sickness, I got to be here today. Is that good or is that bad? I don't know, but I'm here. What I will say too is that I have been taught over the years, I worked in jobs for decades where, guess what? There were mistakes made. It was horrifying to me. It was offensive. I made a mistake, you made a mistake, somebody else made a mistake. Do you know what I was called at the Eldorado? The query queen. Do you know why? That was by the programming manager, because every time a problem would come up, I'd write a query to try to resolve it. There would be this problem-solving thing going on. I mentioned here a long time ago, we can fix things, but we kind of have to get a clue as to what the problem is first before we can fix things. So what I would recommend is that I will look forward instead of back. You guys can look back, but let's look forward and do some problem fixing. What I will say is that this whole pandemic brought a lot of changes into place, right? Now we have to not do face-to-face stuff because we might get sick. All right, well then, let's put something into place that will actually fix the problem. The mail-in ballot came, right? Ballot came in the thing, and I'm going, oh, okay. So I started making my selections, and I would ask other people their opinion on who to vote for, because I'm not always right. So I would take in their consideration, and I marked my mail-in ballot, and I'm thinking, hmm, is a mail-in ballot a good idea? Sometimes the post office actually delivers the mail to the wrong box. So do you know what I do? I walk over and deliver the mail that was delivered to me that should have been mailed to the neighbor. I put it in their box, and I go, is that legal? Did I just break the law? So I take the law very seriously and make sure that I don't do, I don't break the law. So then I'm comparing the ballots and going, wait a second, there's somebody missing on this first ballot that's on the second ballot. So I call, because that's what you do when you have problems, you contact people, and they say, yeah, it was a mistake. I would, oh, uh-oh, a mistake. So what do we do with mistakes? We put things into place to try to prevent them from happening in the future. Just to let you know too, by the time I ended up in the hospital for brain surgery and unnecessary chemo, I had a list, a laundry list of queries that had to be run because there were that many mistakes that happened. And my former boss, who was my peer, Earl Housley, he and Rob Mushu's son, Jared, they sat down and went through each and every one of those queries so they could make sure that payroll was run properly. Now, the other thing is giving away other people's money was wonderful. I didn't have to pay for anything, but I had to make sure it was on time. But I will say that the hardest part of my life right now, because I don't like being slandered or falsely accused, is overcoming evil with good. How do you do that? God knows. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lena Alexander, followed by Buddy Miller.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lena Alexander, and I have been watching closely the data that you guys publish on your website at Washoe County, and I find it disturbing, so first of all, I had my public comment in primary election that your numbers do not match up across the board. The second thing I wanted to highlight, that the difference between the primary 2022 registration list and general election registration list is that, for some reason, those waters that were registered and were present in primary 2020 are not present on general election, and number of those registered waters is 20,000. 20,000 registered waters are missing from primary till general election. The second case is, for some reason, we have people on general election 2022 that weren't on primary list, and that number is also 20,000. Now, I do have a question. Do you suggest that we have 10,000 each pound registered waters in Washoe County? Are you suggesting that we are a state of California with 40 million people live here? That is technically not possible. Nevada population is around 450,000. It is not possible to register every month 10,000 new registered waters. What I tell from this, that out of the primary registration list, 20,000 of people were disenfranchised. That is why we hear reports when people didn't get their ballots, and that is highly questionable. Finally, you have in lobby three signs: quality of public service, integrity, and communication. None of this is true. All is false. I highly recommend do not certify this election. 20,000 people were disenfranchised in general 2022. Thank you.
Buddy Miller, followed by Wayne Gordon.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. My name is Buddy Miller. I'm a registered Washoe County voter. I'm also, and I voted in this 2022 election, I'm also the Deputy Voter Protection Director for Nevada Democratic Victory. That's a Democrat campaign. And my focus was on making sure that every vote cast was counted and that every vote, and that the vote in general gets certified. So I'm asking the Commissioners here to please certify the vote today. A number of the speakers and the Washoe County Republicans have repudiated, or have alleged that they cannot confirm that their votes have been counted. And in the past, there's been allegations of stolen votes, uncounted votes, stuffed ballot boxes, this time stuffed with mail ballots, but no evidence has ever been presented of that, and it has never been proven in a court of law. Despite the fact that those claims were made in 2020, and also again in 2022, it's never been proven in a court of law. So nevertheless, the Republicans are requesting an audit. They allege that votes were not counted, but there's no statute that authorizes They allege that votes were not counted, but there's no statute that authorizes this kind of procedure, as Ms. Canderas has pointed out. And the other thing I would point out is that 194,000 voters cast their ballots in Washoe County and a vocal minority of less than 100 voters shouldn't be able to stop that 194,000 from getting their ballots counted. Their remedy, if they think there's a problem with the vote, is to seek an election contest. There was a question raised about that there was no meaningful observation in what's called the fishbowl while monitoring the ballot counting. Something I would point out is that one gentleman said that we should be able to get right behind the workers and be able to compare the signature along with the worker. Although the regulation adopted by the Secretary of State does indeed say that they're entitled to meaningful observation, the regulation also provides, but the observer must not be located in an area that would infringe on the privacy and the confidentiality of the ballot of the voter. That's key. That's the ballots that has been determined by the Secretary of State and also by the Nevada Legislature. And therefore, it's critical that we observe that right of privacy of the voter.
Thank you, sir.
Wayne Gordon, followed by Zoe Macbeth.
Please.
My name's Wayne Gordon. I live in Reno. And I'm here to say that when we can't trust our elections, there's two bad things. First of all, some of us won't ever be able to participate in our Republican form of government. And secondly, eventually, people who are disenfranchised by not being able to feel like they are, we're going to have a problem with it. That's just a fact. It's going to cause, it's going to cause a lot of issues. Right now, I lost all confidence in our elections. I know that there's a fact that there's people on voter rolls who are not eligible to vote in Nevada. In one case, this person moved to Texas. I've been here and talked about it before. Our rolls still aren't cleaned up. And when I talked to her yesterday, she said, well, what if, what if somebody voted for me in Nevada and Texas finds out and arrests me for voting twice? Do you think that sounds like a good idea? Should she be under that kind of stress? Probably not. I took check the ballot tracking on my ballot. I never received a ballot at home, but I think I said I didn't want any mail-in ballots. I received a sample. When I went in, I asked for an actual physical ballot and they said, well, you can't have one. And I said, what do you mean? I got one last time. They printed it out for me. Well, I had come down here in the spring and had a ballot. So further, it said eventually that my ballot was received, excuse me, cast in person on November 11th. That was a lie. I cast it in person at 7:15 on November the 8th. But because I had no piece of paper, we have no way of confirming that whatever the machine decided to take in is what was actually put out. Couple other things. We've had people come up here and say, well, I'm nonpartisan. And I would like to say, I'll say BS instead. We're all partisan in one way or another. I am a Republican. Well, I'm actually a constitutional conservative. I'm proud of that. And I don't like to think people that are up here, we're not, you've already been told we're not a democracy. So I won't go through that part.
Thank you.
Zoe Macbeth, followed by Kelly Rado. Zoe Macbeth, Kelly Rado.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Kelly Rado. I'm a native Nevadan. I'm a third generation and I'm here on behalf of my 18-year-old son, who is currently living and residing in Spain. I'm really disappointed. I've raised my kids to tell them to be involved in the process, to vote, to participate, and to appreciate that we have a democracy living in Spain. He's particularly fond of this country and respects and admires what the United States stands for. He had two brothers that lived in Spain in 2020 who voted absentee and they went through the process of voting and had no problems at all. This time, my 18-year-old son, I walked him through the process. He went to the Secretary of State website through the Nevada EAS program and had to attest that he met one of two categories, which was a citizen living abroad or military. He met that as a citizen living abroad, so attested to that, continued on, had to verify that he was at least 18 years of age, resident of Washoe County, few other questions. He attested to that, went into his ballot, marked his candidates, and received a confirmation that said his ballot had been successfully processed. Later, he received an email from the Registrar of Voters that said his ballot had not been processed with no reason. He tried to reach them, which was difficult from Spain, so I finally got through to the office on the 14th. A gentleman answered the phone and I wish I would have gotten his name. I was told that the vote had been cast and counted. When I questioned it because ballot track said something different, I was assured that the current and correct information was at the Registrar of Voters office. I was still uncertain because of the email that had been received and because of what ballot track said, so I asked if there was someone that could confirm that. I was transferred, received a voicemail. I immediately hung up and called back. The phone was not answered. I could not get through again. The next day, I got a return phone call, but mind you, this is a day too late now to cure a vote, and I was told that the reason why it was rejected was because there was no international address provided. When I explained that at no time was an address asked for, at no time in the process was an address asked for, I was told that that was the requirement and that was why the vote was rejected. So mind you now, anybody that goes into an absentee ballot and verifies their position to vote absentee is not asked for an address and receives a confirmation that their ballot has been received, but then their votes are being rejected because they didn't provide an address. That's just wrong. So I hope you guys have questions in regards to that as well, because I don't know how many people vote absentee. I don't know how many of those absentee votes weren't counted like my son. And now I have to go answer to my son why his vote wasn't counted, because he didn't provide information that was never asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Roger Chamey, followed by Ken Giato.
First off, I'd like to ask that you certify the vote. And then I'd like to address some of the questions and concerns that some of the other speakers have brought up. First off, Carolyn Sullivan, I don't know if you're still here. I apologize deeply for carrying on talking about music and bands and things like that while we were observing. Had you asked me not to, as you did on a previous occasion, I would have. Now, insofar as you're saying that you're about, that the computer screen on your computer, the online record said "received" as opposed to "counted"? Well, I asked about this. I asked Jamie about this and she told me it's either received or rejected. If it hadn't been counted, it would have shown rejected on the computer screen. Insofar as there being areas that were not easily visible from the fishbowl, and by the way, I was a vote observer, a count observer rather. There were four cameras throughout the room covering those areas, most of those areas anyway, and unlike during the primary, there was a monitor that we could all look at with those screens. So that's for Carol. Tracy Hilton Thomas, she talked about the, she asked about the affiliations, about there being no Republicans in the count room. Well, each person had to wear a badge. Most of them were NP. I saw at least one Republican in there. Sometimes the badges with the affiliations were difficult to read because they had other lanyards in front of them. Regarding Janet Porter and Cliff Nellis, insofar as signature verification, Janet said, how can you tell? Because your signature changes. Well, another question I asked Jamie, they have examples of your signatures from over the years on that computer screen. So they can tell because your signature does change. And for Cliff, not being able to see them do the verifications of the signatures, there were four or five monitors facing directly to the fishbowl that any of us could have seen when they were doing the verifications. Our shifts were only four hours long each, so maybe you missed one. I know that I saw at least one set of signature verifications during my time of being a count observer. Thank you very much.
Ken Giato, followed by Janet Carter.
Okay, so hold on a second, Mr. Otto. Commissioners, we've only got five more people to go, so I suggest instead of doing a hard stop at noon, let's continue on. Okay? Yep, okay. Mr. Otto, welcome.
Yes, my name's Master Sergeant Ken Giato, retired. And I wasn't going to talk today, but somebody kind of got my goat. Offended me seriously, and that was Mr. Gordon Gossage with his racist and bigoted comments about the Japanese. And I'd like that those comments to be struck. As a Japanese person who was born in Japan, my mother was Japanese, and my grandparents were incarcerated illegally and then by the Canadian government and then exiled, stripped of their citizenship, and I have served 20 years, as well as my uncle, who was in the 442nd, full-blooded Japanese and born in Hawaii during the time of the strike of Pearl Harbor. I find it offensive that any Democrat can come up here and say those things and a Republican cannot. And I am upset. With that said, the other point I'd like to make is that if it wasn't for me, that lady over there, Janice Gallusini, would not be sitting there. I pointed out to the Secretary of State, I have it in writing, I have the responses, that that person over there, the ROV, failed to put her on the ballot. Without her name on the ballot, she would not have gotten a vote. Without a vote, she would not have been elected. I am, was a candidate for that position. I was her competition. I didn't have to look and fight with myself about it. I did the right thing. But the fact of the matter is, I have identified numerous issues with that job that she's The Washoe County people need to know that. I am not an election denier. I am an election questioner. I question how these elections were conducted. The nation questions it. It was on the national news, eight hours, videos going down, not simultaneously, but individually, and they said it was a server issue. I am a computer expert from the 70s. So strike that man's comments from the record. I demand it. And I am appalled that you allowed it.
Thank you, sir.
Janet Carter, followed by Penny Brock.
Hello, can you hear me?
Welcome.
My name is Janet Carter. I am registered to vote in Reno, Nevada. I was not paid to be here. I want to make that clear upfront. I also want to make clear upfront that I don't have any relatives that I know of who died in World War II. I say that I know of because I'm quite sure on my mother's side, there were many who died in the concentration camps in Eastern Europe. That being said, I speak today for two people. One is my father. He may not have died in World War II, but he spent months in a prisoner-of-war camp in Germany as a result of his service before he was able to come home. And my mother, who for over 25 years worked as an election worker for the Registrar of Voters in Alameda County, California. So I have nothing but true respect for election workers. I know how hard my mother worked. I know the days that she missed my sister's birthday because she was working on an election. I know the times every year that she missed Halloween and taking us out trick-or-treating because she was working on an election. So I speak for them as well as myself. I was registered to vote in Washoe County for years and moved away probably about eight, nine, 10 years ago and was in, and during my time in Nevada, I've lived in four counties. I've always had an easy time voting in all of them. I've never had any problems with the elections. The pandemic forced me to move out of state. I had lost my job and I had, the only place where I really felt comfortable living was closer to family in another state. After the pandemic was easing a bit and I received my job back and was able to work again, I ended up working in Reno. And in September of this year, I moved back to Reno, found a place to live. Finding an affordable place to live was not easy, but I did. And have been, and the first thing I did was come down to this building to register to vote. I wanted to make sure that I was ready. I was quite sure that I would not receive a mail-in ballot because I'd registered to vote fairly close to the deadline. I did receive a mail-in ballot in time to vote early. And I voted early in person because that's how I have always chosen to vote, because I liked the feeling of dropping my ballot in the election box. And I was able to vote easily. I was able to vote safely. And when I registered to vote, I told them that I was canceling my registration, asking my registration in another state be canceled. I don't think I voted twice. I know I didn't vote twice. And I don't think that anyone was able to vote in my place. That's why signatures are checked, to make sure that doesn't happen. That's why ballots are checked, to make sure that doesn't happen. We have great election workers in this state and we have a great election system, and please certify this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Penny Brock, followed by Debbie Hedges.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'm Penny Brock. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you on behalf of this election. I'm asking you not to certify it. I'm giving you this little pamphlet as a reminder. It's Thanksgiving week, right? So we need to be reminded, how was America founded? It was founded by people basically from Europe that came to America for religious freedom. And with that came the Judeo-Christian value system. And with that came John Locke's writings and others from England, which our Declaration of Independence, Constitution, other founding documents are based on. We are a constitutional republic, and it grieves my heart what's happening with our elections. We are becoming like Venezuela and other Third World countries. And I know that many are saying that those of us that are election deniers, stolen elections, but I would like to say on the other hand, those that deny stolen elections are stolen election deniers. So I've, it is my opinion based on research that our 2022 election was stolen, and this is an outrage. It violates God's law and it violates our constitution and a civil right to a fair and honest election, where every legal vote counts. We are worse than a banana republic in Washoe County. Washoe County is being watched by the nation and by the Lord. It is, it is an embarrassment as well as an outrage. We, the people who you represent... We, the people who you represent, ask for a new election by paper ballots and hand-count the ballots and no electronic voting machines. We ask for a fair and honest 2022 election. Be restored to the residents of Washoe County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Debbie Hedges and then Zoe Macbeth.
Thank you for this opportunity to express my opinion. If there's nothing to hide, we hide nothing. And you cannot have chain of custody with ballots and ballot harvesting at the same time. Impossible. I would like to delay the certification of this election in order for us election questioners to be proven wrong. And Mr. Miller, who says we have 100 people protesting, we represent tens of thousands. Not, it's not 100. There's an army of us that feel like we have not been represented fairly. Prove that we are wrong, and we will go away and never say another word. Give some time, do the count, prove to us that this election is fair and was legitimate. We have a lot of evidence that it wasn't. Just prove it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Zoe Macbeth.
Thank you.
Zoe Macbeth.
Welcome.
Oh, sorry, I'm getting out my thing I wrote down.
Go ahead, please start the clock.
Okay. So my name is Zoe. I'm a citizen of the state of Nevada, have been since birth. I am a resident of Reno lifelong, and I'm an advocate of economic and environmental justice. And I've came out in critical support of our election validation, not because I believe that this democracy is a healthy and really all that must have helped, a good one, but because it is much preferable to the solution proposed by those on the far right, who have now called foul time and time and again about supposed fraud, which they have not put down sufficient evidence for, and have gone over to false prophets and false Christs like Dinesh Sussa and QAnon for their sources and whatnot. And these people, you know, they'll go on and on about this kind of stuff, but they will always ignore like actual problems we have in the election system, like actual like gerrymandering, or the lack of accessibility to working, or marginalized communities. They'll ignore like the lack representation that Mark Amade has presented in his election towards our indigenous communities out there in Fallon, and the land in which they have inhabited for thousands of years by expanding, or at least proposing to expand, the naval base into the Fallon area. And that it is of my belief that these people are not as concerned about election integrity as it is their own political team winning, and basically having the fear of loss of this power of their side, which is basically composed of like a very, like a relatively small minority in our state, which is used for the most part secular and multicultural, with one that is for the most part usually evangelical, and one that is mostly white Anglo-Saxon Protestant. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, sir.
I have nobody else signed in in chambers, but I do have two emails that will be placed on the record.
Okay. We'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. Commissioners, questions for staff at this time?
I have no questions. I'm happy to make a motion when you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, hold on. Do I have any questions from online? Commissioner?
No, no, Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Anything from you, Commissioner Jung?
No, thank you.
Okay. So let me, let me just, oh, let me call in Commissioner Herman. Go ahead.
You were calling for questions?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead. I mean, if you have questions or comments.
Okay, comments too. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just wasn't.
No, no, I, I apologize. Questions or comments?
I, I wanted to say that, you know, I've probably gone through more elections in my life than anybody that's sitting out there. Maybe I have one or two, maybe that have seen more elections. So I'm coming from some experience. I worked on the campaign for General Eisenhower years and years ago. So I think he'd be turning over in his grave if he saw what was going on here in Washoe There were, I'm not going to repeat all the things that everybody has said because they're all valid, they're all, all good, but there's so many injustices that have happened to people. Personally, I didn't get a sample ballot. I did get a ballot. At one point in my life, I was very distressed because I never missed an election all through those years. And I missed one. Wasn't my fault, but somebody had voted in my place. I mean, I cried. It was horrible. I just felt so bad. And here there's, here's a man that was, I don't remember if it was talked about today, but he voted six times and they all went through. They were all accepted. There were, there were so many things, and you guys have mentioned a lot. Earlier this year, I tried to get a, you know, some, some different ideas across for election integrity, which is extremely important to me. Extremely. Our, our whole existence in America is a transparent election. It's based on that. I was born on the Fourth of July, and it's always been, I've been this red, white, and blue girl. So, and I always tried to be accepting, accepting everybody's beliefs, and I honor them for having their beliefs. But there comes a time when the evidence is there. I watched every bit of the recordings or the cameras information that we were able to see that I could get to. And I saw a lot of things in that. I'm sure everybody that watched it did find things that they were concerned about. I think maybe we need to find out how they did it in Florida. They had an election that was, was very successful, and it's like it happened in the old days, you know, with having the election results the same day. Just seems like it made a lot more sense. And I remember a whole lot more elections where, where that was the case rather than what happened this time. Anyhow, that's probably all I need to say. I will not vote for this canvas.
Okay, thank you. So let me ask a question. Madam DA, do we have the ability to call for another election?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, no, you don't.
Okay. Is, is her microphone on?
Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
In the context of what we're doing today, you cannot call for another election. There's ability to do that under the statutory scheme, but certain requirements must be met, and, and the county commission does not have the standing to do that. It would be a opponent or a defeated candidate or a voter. So you do not have that authority. The only authority that you have here today is to canvas the vote.
Okay, so that would, that, who would have the authority to call for that election, for that additional election?
There's a mechanism in the Nevada revised statutes for a recount. And a defeated candidate or aggrieved candidate could do that. I believe there's also a provision in there that a voter could do that. Before that can happen, the canvas has to go to the Secretary of State. But that's a, that's a proceeding that's outlined by statute by the Secretary of State and the Nevada Legislature, to which you have really no part in. Your part, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, is, is really, we call it ministerial under the law, a ministerial nondiscretionary function.
Okay, all right. So my final comments are, I, there, we have laws in Nevada that I absolutely feel need to be revisited. There are just no question of that. We've got to revisit them. It's, it's one of those things where I'm hopeful, now that we have a different governor, that we can revisit some laws to clean things up so that we can ensure that when we mail out a ballot, it goes to the right person. Voter rolls, voter, cleaning up the voter rolls is essential, and I think that there are some legislative fixes that can be dealt with to deal with that. So a lot of what I heard today also was had to do with some technical issues. And so, Mr. Manager, I'd certainly like to follow up at some point on the ballot track system and, and, you know, several other things and the way that we list things on the website. So there's, so that there's no question for people when their ballot has arrived, when it has been counted, how that has, how that has occurred. And I believe if memory serves me correctly, ballot tracks is a third-party system. Is that, that's not?
No.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am. It should be on.
Oh, there I am. Mr. Chairman, Jamie Rodriguez for the record, yes. Ballot tracks is a third-party system. It is a third-party system through the state.
Okay.
That is not our contract.
That's said.
Yeah.
Got it. Through the state. Okay. Very good. All right, Commissioners, I'm ready. I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the canvas and declare the 2022 general election results as set forth in the report presented by the Register of Voters, including official vote totals, the stated clerical errors, and their lack of impact on the counts, and direct the ROV to enter the abstract into the record and transfer the abstract to the Secretary of State in accordance with NRS 293.387.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
No.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Lucy. Is there any other discussion on this item? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Okay? All right. Thank you. We're going to go into recess. We're going to go have some lunch. We'll be back in an hour at 12, at 1:30 to take our final public comment. Here's Lucy and Jung. Are you guys online?
I am.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucy?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to call us back to order, and giving us a break. That takes us now to item number five. Mr. Manager, would you give us into our final public comment?
Item five is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda. The Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
First up, we have James Benton. I don't see him in chambers, but he could be in the hallway, we'll give him a sec. Next up, we have Elise Weatherly.
Welcome.
Hi, Elise Weatherly, the narcissistic do-gooder. That's what I've decided I am. I'm a narcissistic do-gooder. Do you guys remember that song, "I'll Be Watching You"? I was introduced to that song in California when I was married to a man I shouldn't have been married to, and his half-sister was being sung to by her husband that song, "I'll Be Watching You". He was going to keep an eye on her. Now, there's a commercial out there about, you know, hackers and stuff, and "I'll Be Watching You". Well, here's the deal, can I watch everybody's everything? No, I can't, but God can. And I keep trying to tell people now, how do I express the truth in a way that doesn't get me in trouble? You can't. You tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and then you just wait for the fallout, right? So, as a little side note of trivia, do you guys know who Robin Denholm is? She is Tesla's CEO. She took over after Elon Musk stepped down. Do you know where I was when I found out about Enron? I was in the Eldorado Accounting Department in one of the offices, and I went, hmm. Then I found out, okay, so Arthur Andersen, hmm, they were part of the Enron takedown, which caused SOX. Do you remember SOX? Sarban Ochsley, that now makes it... Have I lost your interest? Oh, good, okay. SOX took down the fact that people could no longer be trusted, because you were in a corporate environment now, you have to, you know, you have to keep an eye on everybody, everybody. Nobody does anything good, so you have to put in rules that says everybody's a bad guy, right? And so, here we have Robin Denholm, who used to work for Arthur Andersen at the time that Enron happened and SOX compliance came about. So, do you know what I would do if I were at the Tesla stock meetings, which I can go to because I've got some stock, and it's not my idea, it was my grandson's idea? I'd say, what did you go through when you found yourself in that position and situation? See, just because somebody was there doesn't mean they're necessarily the bad guy, right? They might have just been at the wrong place at the wrong time. But what do we do about employees in our midst that don't do a good job? What do we do with the people that, you know, pave the roads and they leave it as a speed bump out there and they don't come back to fix it? Do we just say, well, you're having a bad day, kind of like Richard Allan Davis, right? He murdered his 12-year-old. Oh, gosh, he was just having a bad day. How about the murderer Zodiac Killer, who by the way, my brother-in-law, his sister-in-law, was murdered by the Zodiac Killer? Well, he thinks that you just disappear when you die, and I'm going, no, you don't. You stand before God and you give a full account of your life. You don't think that's true? Well, why don't we meet together in about, I don't know, 50 years? Let's talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas St. John appears to not be here anymore. Cindy Martinez.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Madam District Attorney, Madam Clerk. For the record, Cindy Martinez. And I wasn't going to come down today, but I was so excited by listening to my fellow citizens talk about the election, and I felt compelled to come down here and place on the record information that my fellow citizens would definitely benefit from. And one of those things that I did not hear anyone talking about is Nevada Revised Statute 293 and the corresponding regulations, Nevada Administrative Code 293, which are the regulations that implement the statutory intent that was passed by legislation in AB 321 in the 2021 legislature. My understanding of that, and what your role here, was to implement the scope of the election and to carry out the legislative intent of what the legislator passed. Now, I don't like some of the... I don't like a lot of the parameters of that. I don't like the outcome of some of those races. However, having been a poll watcher and also having professional experience in the law enforcement and regulatory environment, I understand the scope of the regulatory framework in which you had to operate. In particular, on Election Day, I was at the Spanish Springs Library, we had a hiccup. Mr. Manager was down there with, you know, code three, lights and sirens. IT was down there, lights and sirens, getting things fixed. My experience in the electoral process, I didn't have a problem with it. I know that I have a responsibility of participating in a constitutional representative republic by ensuring that my registration is sound, is current, is accurate, which I had done on a monthly basis, only because of the misinformation that's been put out into the public, which based on... I had the privilege of volunteering with Governor-elect Lombardo's campaign, and I had an opportunity to talk to many, many people in our county, in the electorate, and what I heard, not overwhelmingly, but with sufficient level of concern to me, was that their trust in the electoral process has been destroyed by the misinformation that is being promulgated by members of this community. And I'm here to say, as a 28-year resident of Washoe County, while there may be some clerical errors, while there may be some errors in process, that what I'm hearing the registrar of voters is intent on rectifying, I did not experience anything that was problematic. And I support this county commission, and I support our registrar of voters to do whatever they find necessary to place appropriate corrections, but the remedy, Washoe County, is in the legislature which convenes in February of 2023. And if you want to have a voice, find out who your senator is, find out who your assembly person is, and make connection with them and express your concern about the electoral process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Janet Butcher?
Welcome.
Thank you, Janet Butcher, for the record. I left my notes in my husband's truck, so I'm going to wing it. I wanted to kind of explain a little bit about the signature verification. My point was that if 80% of the people came in and offered me their ID, they do not have an issue with voter ID. And I have to say, it was very helpful because some of those signatures, if they hadn't given me their ID, and I could look at their face and go, oh, my gosh, that is them, there's no way I could have passed them. And again, having been a poll worker, I appreciated the fact that I was allowed to do that process. It was really interesting, and it was heads-down, total 100%, boom, boom, boom. And I was so discouraged when I heard that there were people that were waiting in line an hour and a half to two hours. And there were a couple, while I was early voting, or when I was... During the early poll-working experience, election-working experience, and I was just at the ballot only drop-off, we had several people come in that said they were turned away at the Spanish Springs Library and told that they could not accept their ballot there. That they had to... That they weren't... I don't know if their stamp had gone bad, I don't know. They weren't given an explanation, they were just told they couldn't drop their drop-off ballot there. So, I did call that in, I don't know if it was what happened there, but those are the things that people want to kind of know. Another couple came in, and they had voted, and they were of the opposite party than what I'm affiliated with, and they came in five or six days after they had dropped off their ballot, and they still hadn't seen even that it was received. So, there's a lot of process issues, a lot of process issues that at our level, that at the county level, that can be addressed and taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Renee Rosentz.
Welcome back. A couple things, there's a lot of things, but my understanding is if there's not an NRS statute, you guys aren't going to deal with it. So, but nonetheless, these things happened. There was one night when I was there, when they were bringing in bags, blue bags. They did it completely different than they did at the primary. They came in through the garage and the front, and they were escorted in by, most of the time, by Heather, and they lined up around the tables. They had those set up completely different. The runners were allowed to stay in the building with the blue bags, which blocked our vision. And even though the monitors were there, there were so many people in there that it was difficult to see. And like I said, bags came in from the front door and the garage. And then, after that, I mean, they're all just having a ball. I mean, it was like a party in there, laughing and talking, and it was like social hour. And I'm not sure why they allowed all the runners in there. There were people that came in with purses, they're not allowed to have purses in there, with cell phones, they're not allowed to do this. And then they brought in the dogs, which some people are calling service dogs, but there was no need for service dogs in there. The people who... The man who brought them in, it was a runner who held the door open until he got the dogs together and walked them in. And I didn't know runners could man the doors to the garage. And that created more chaos, and so there was more distraction. It was really hard to observe. The workers all went around the dogs to play with them, and so there was more distraction. It was really, really bad. It was an embarrassment, to tell you the truth. And so, anyway, I just want to let you know that I lived in Ecuador for five and a half years. You had to, in order to live there, you had to apply for a sedula, which is ID, and if you drove, you needed to drive, you needed a driver's license. You had to prove that you had the funds to support yourself, and you had to carry insurance. So, there was no one moving there because it was a great place to go and get something from the government. You actually helped them when you moved there, to bring in your funds and to be able to apply, to give jobs to people. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
If nobody else signed in.
Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to our final item, Commissioners and County Managers announcements.
Item six is Commissioners and County Managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
No, Mr. Chair, I do not.
Okay. Commissioners, I don't have anybody signed in. Online, either Commissioners Lucy or Jung?
No.
Okay, and I have nothing, Mr. Manager. Let's follow up afterwards on some of the comments that were made today. Let's do that, along with the voter registrar, and if there is nothing else, Commissioners, we are adjourned.